Good evening and welcome to the Town Board meeting. It is February 10th. Would you please stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for those of you who braved this cool night, we thank you. And we'll plunge right into the Town Board meeting, which is a business meeting on the second Tuesday of the month. And I will begin with the supervisor's report. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tend to the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month ending January 31st, 2015. The opening balance was $2,780,080. Receipts were $206,420. Dispersed was $512,377, leaving a balance at $2,474,123. I draw your attention to a report on the sales tax. And that's on the next, maybe the last three pages, three pages from the last or two pages from the last. You'll see a history of the sales tax. And try as we might to be conservative in guessing and estimating, I should say estimating, the appropriate sales tax balance. We fell short this year of $4,198. So I'm sorry to see that because that means we have to make up that $4,198 elsewhere. But we all worked hard at it and we thought we were being as conservative as possible in not overestimating. And that is the result of the final balance of sales tax for 2014.
Pretty close budgeting.
It was very close. I agree. It was very close. The amount, and thank you for saying that, Jim. The amount, total amount of sales taxes for the Town of Red Hook were $370,801. So looked at it that way, the little over $4,000 isn't such a deviation.
One percent.
Right.
Apparently I did read an article that was controlled and put out that the sales tax was down, was up in New York City and down in the Hudson Valley, as I recall.
Well, it is what it is, as we say. And coupled before we accept the supervisor's report, I just wanted to read this little statement from Ann Conway. Today, February 10th, 2015, we began the process of compiling data for the annual financial report for 2014. The data that is to be included in the accounting for 2014 has been identified and will be entered into the books for December 2014. Once that has been done, the budget will be reviewed for budget adjustments to be made. The cash will be verified to the trial balance and the ending fund balances will be verified to reflect the year's transactions. Once the trial balance, supervisor's report, expenditure and revenue report and ending fund balances are reconciled each to the other, the annual financial report can be processed and final reports will be available. All reports will be complete and available by February 27th. And that is from Ann Conway, our bookkeeper. And we're grateful to her for the accounting that she does. So that is, in sum, the supervisor's report. Is there a motion to accept?
No move.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I have a couple of announcements, but I'll first ask if any of you have any. Jim, have you any announcements to make?
I do not.
Okay. And Brenda?
Just a brief one. I wanted to mention a program that has, is being sponsored by Bard College Conservatory of Music. And I've been working with Ann Gobler there. They received a grant to provide transportation to some of our seniors to go to their concerts. And the kickoff performance is this coming Sunday, February 15th. And the folks at Red Hook Commons and Provo's Park and Tivoli will have a bus pick them up and accompany them to a Bach concert at the conservatory from 1:00 until 4:00 p.m. on Sunday. And I just want to thank Bard for their collaboration and their generosity.
Thank you, Brenda. Harry?
No, I don't have anything.
And Bill?
No.
Okay. I have a couple of things, just to draw attention to something that three of us up here did, which I thought, Harry, you as a board member, should be commended for. The Northern Dutchess Alliance Breakfast was a huge success and it was a pleasure to see Bard College recognized with an award for their contributions to the community and Duchess County Ag and Farmland Protection Board. And I thought it was beautifully done and the keynote speakers were good and a lot of information shared and nice people all there. So if you will take our congratulations back to the board, we'll be grateful and I hope they do it again. It was a very, very nice event and worthy of that good group of people who work so hard. I got the usual annual announcement from Rebuilding Together Duchess County from the executive director Christina Bork. And again, it identifies the program that is in its 23rd year of cost-free critical home repairs and accessibility modifications for homeowners who qualify. So this is a program for people who qualify. It does have an income eligibility basis. And the income eligibility is 80% or below of the Duchess County median household income. Applicants must be Duchess County residents and own and reside in the home seeking repairs. All types of homes are eligible except for mobile homes on property or on property owned by someone else. Your mortgage, if you have one, and property school taxes must be current. You must have homeowner's insurance. Required repairs fall within our mission of warm, safe, dry, and independent. And the home's appraised value must be under $239,860. And the agency, Rebuilding Together Duchess County, will serve the same homeowner once in a five-year period and no more than twice in total. This, I know, is a program that has assisted some homeowners here in Red Hook. And I do hope that anyone who needs home repairs or home insulation or whatever they need for their home and can't manage to put the funds together, will inquire about it. I'm going to leave Sue McCann this poster that has tear-offs for people there in your office. So anyone who is interested in it can come by and tear off the little coupon that gives the information about it. But you can find more information from 454-7310. It's a wonderful program and, as I said, in its 23rd year. The application period is... Oh, it's hidden. Sorry. Thought I would have it right up front and I don't. I know it has a spring deadline. I just don't see the date here. So in any event, call 454-7310 and inquire about this. The rebuilding days themselves are Saturday, April 25th and Saturday, October 24th. So doing actual two rebuilding days, but I don't see the deadline for the application. So we'll have to seek that out. And I'll bring it back again. It's a great program and I commend it to you. And the last thing, or maybe next to the last thing, second to the last thing, is to remind you all that there is an election for village elections. They are off-cycle from our own town elections. And the election this year is on Wednesday, March 18th, from 12:00 noon to 9:00 p.m. Polls will be opened from 12:00 noon to 9:00 p.m. for village elections. That's the Village of Red Hook and the Village of Tivoli. And lastly, I received a letter from County Executive Mark Molinaro, who says, "I am pleased to announce that preliminary funding decisions for 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program this year have been made and your project, Town Hall ADA Handicapped Access Improvements, have been recommended." So we are very, very grateful to the county for continuing to work with this federal fund. It's a demanding program, has an enormous number of criteria and a lot of paper follow-up. But they have helped. In this year, they were able to provide $939,000 to eight worthwhile projects in 11 communities. And they were also able to provide $164,000 to seven public service projects that will assist needy households throughout the county. So it's a way that the administration of Duchess County Planning can help municipalities help themselves. Ordinarily, it's municipalities apply for funding that meet the criteria for the Community Development Block Grant. It's all based on eligibility that are vetted through committee and through county and I'm sure further officials. And the projects generally are projects that communities, especially in this financial environment, cannot afford to do themselves. So we're very, very happy to be able to make the upgrades to Town Hall and the sidewalks and the parking lot and the Town Hall itself for people who have been challenged physically and elderly who come and go here. It's going to be a wonderful change and long overdue. So we thank them for that. And that's my announcements. Sue, you have a clerk's report.
Yes, I do. The monthly report for January of 2015. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the Spade and Neuter Program, $62. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $135. Amount remitted to New York Department of Racing and Wagering, $15. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $58.58. For a total state, county, and total and local revenue of $5,053. I've also tonight presented the tax receiver financial report for 2014 and the town clerk financial report for 2014. As far as taxes, last year's warrant was $8,567,000. $3 million basically gets paid to the town. The balance gets collected for the county and we returned uncollected, let's see. I had the figure here a second ago. Oh, unpaid $889,000, which is actually for this warrant. Very well, very good, very good records. The town clerk financial report, total local shares collected, The state received $18,005.72 for a total town clerk fees of $44,120.21. Water, a total, water revenue was $106,739.18. And that's it. So yearly required to submit this to the Town Board.
And you always do.
It has been done.
And you always do.
Actually, it was ready for the January meeting, which I didn't attend, so.
Thank you, Sue. That's, it's great to have this in hand and for us to appreciate all that you do, that you do it with such ease and grace that most people aren't aware that $150,000 regularly is through your hands and accounted for and always with great careful accounting. So we appreciate it very much, not to mention the millions in taxes. And I hesitate to say that anyone else in this building would want to be tax collector. So I think you're still one of the most popular people around. I don't know how you do it when you ask people for taxes.
I have to pay them myself.
That's right. You're right. Fair enough. Thank you, Sue.
Sure.
Okay, so this is the point in time where we have public comment. Is there any public comment before we begin the agenda? Okay. Yes. Yes, on a night that is four degrees outside, we do. So the agenda will begin then, if there are no comments from the array. The first, Jim Ross has agreed, thank you very much, to attend the Association of Towns Conference in Manhattan at the Hilton from February 15th to the 18th. And he will be our delegate. And Jim, I asked you to take a look at the various resolutions that you will be voting on to comment on them if you can. They're lengthy and some of them seem to be ones that we see on a regular basis. Are there any that stand out in your estimation?
I was just looking at my packet here this evening, Sue. Of course, if anybody has any particular feelings one way or the other, let me know this week before we go down. Some of them look like ones that have been brought before a number of times.
Yeah.
I was wondering, is there? I attended last year, but not the business meeting. So is there, when the floor is open, to the delegates to discuss something that might be one of these pre-plan resolutions?
Yes. Yes, the delegates can bring forward questions and motions. The meeting is open to, I believe, only delegates. Isn't that right, Jim? Don't you have to have a? It may be open to everyone, but only delegates can vote or speak.
Or speak, I think, yes. It's open to anybody.
Right.
Well, the reason I ask is because, you know, we received that letter from the Association of Towns endorsing that municipal energy program, a cooperative electricity purchasing program. And when discussing that with the CAC chairperson today, she said, "Well, how, what proportion of the energy you would buy from them?" And we did actually ask them about the cost and got a really good price. And I said, "Well, I don't know. They didn't, they didn't say." So when I read what the Association of Towns had said in their letter endorsing the group, you know, they touted efficiency of government. They touted lower costs. They touted being able to plan your budget because you get a fixed rate for 24 months and all that. But I just think it would be also interesting and a lot of us are climate smart communities who would be interested in knowing what part of the energy supply does come from renewable sources. Is that something we would feel comfortable mentioning? Or is that something the board would care to ask on our behalf?
Well, how do you ask it, though? I mean, through what medium?
I guess if you have the floor at the public meeting, at the business meeting, you could raise that concern and say, "When you endorse a project like this, you know, there's some of us that would have other criteria for evaluating who to endorse." Or additional criteria.
I've been a delegate a number of years, Brenda, and my sense is that people generally send a letter in advance and then are recognized by the board. And if you wanted to draft one and send one, I would think that would be wise, to have them prepared and ask for a written response. So, and I think it's perfectly appropriate. That's, I can give you, you know, we can give you the name, certainly of the executive director, but it also could go to their legal department. Either one would, I'm sure, come back and get us the answers that you're asking for. I would ask for it. And then Jim can follow through by speaking to someone down there. Jim, Lori Mitham would be one. You know, I think you know who she is. She's the counsel to the...
To answer your question, though, I mean, I've looked at all the 21 resolutions. 11 through 21 are recommended by the committee. And I have no objection to our delegate voting in favor of those resolutions, 11 through 21. They're basically not very earth-shaking amendments to anything.
I agree.
And that would be my position.
Anyone else feel differently?
I have. I noticed here at the last sentence in this paragraph, in the opening paragraph, it says, "All proposals contained herein have been forwarded to the Bylaws Committee for their consideration." So something got to them before this.
Yes.
To put these items on the agenda.
Yes.
I hope it doesn't snow on you, Jim. It doesn't have to go outdoors while they sit here.
Okay. Well, again, thank you, Jim, for doing that. The opening session is Monday morning at 8:45 with breakfast in the Grand Ballroom. And it's always an interesting conference with lots of good speakers.
You know, and I know, Brenda, I believe it's Sunday afternoon. They have a session to go over all these with the delegates. So if I have something to do then, I can bring it up. It's like a distant roundtable type of thing. I know they don't have. I gotta notice somewhere, I believe it's Sunday afternoon 3 or something like that now. I would definitely go to that.
Yes, from 3:00 to 5:00 in Beakman, Jim.
3:00 to 5:00 in Beakman?
No, Beakman Room. Beakman Parlor. Again, thank you, Jim. The second item on the agenda is an issue that has come to us by way of the intermunicipal task force, among others. And I was hoping that we could talk a little bit, or Harry, or Bill, or Brenda, we'd all chime in, on this issue of the size of the traditional neighborhood design cottage. We're being asked to consider a larger footprint or footage, square footage.
Square footage.
Yeah. So Harry, would you carry that one for us?
Yes. The, there's a project before the planning board we're right now for, on the Hoffman Property, Kershaw Properties are proposing a development of some, just over 100 houses. And they're before the planning board. They have done a very elaborate design and have really quite, quite nice houses. We've all seen them and they've been in the public eye for quite some time. But an issue has come up with the smallest houses. When, when we did the zoning, we set several, several different categories of houses and the size. And the smallest house, we called it, was called a cottage. And the cottage was limited to 1,200 square feet. And the zoning law requires a certain percentage of the houses in any development be cottages. And as it turns out, 1,200 square feet was, was very much on the small side in retrospect. And Kershaw Properties has asked us to take a look at that and we have. And after considerable discussion, both with their planner, our planner, Duchess County Planning, we have decided to alter that. And so the cottage will be 1,500 square, size will be 1,500 square feet. It will take a resolution of the Town Board. It is, it is a change of the zoning language. It is, it'll be done in concert with the planning board. The planning board would be the lead agency and they would, they would deal with the SECR process. And we, and we will carry, carry it along with a vote from the Town Board ultimately, after, after all the other elements of it are complete. All I can say at this point, it has left the breach. It's, it's in progress. And there, there isn't anything we will be doing tonight other than, other than outlining what, what will be done and why it's being done.
Okay. Bill, did you have anything you want to comment?
Well, the influence, I think, of County Planning was mentioned by Harry, but John Clark appeared and had his input. And what is recommended in Green Plan's memorandum, which is going to be provided for the board day of February 5th, is a review of that recommendation, actually that dates back, as to whether or not this range of size in the housing units to be available in the new developments are consistent with the provisions of our comprehensive plan. That was, it created in 1990 and was revised in 2011. But what's recommended now by Green Plan, the 1,500-square-foot minimum for cottage, is consistent with that comprehensive plan. So that was just the conclusion. And based upon that, it's a recommendation to make that amendment.
That's actually, 1,500 square feet would be a maximum.
Maximum.
And there's still the option to make them smaller on part of the developer.
Okay, so my understanding is that if we all agree, we will forward this then to, I believe it goes to the attorney for the town to put it in form of a zoning, proposed zoning amendment.
Yes.
From then, it goes to the planning board and to the Duchess County Planning as well.
It has to be reviewed, correct.
Both of them. So I so moved that we do that.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussions?
Yeah, I have to be perfectly honest with you. I've read all the stuff and I thought from very beginning that 12 was a little too restrictive. It makes a lot more sense to me this way. I'm just curious, since it is a zoning modification, though, why the planning board is the lead agency in doing the SECR, not the Town Board, since we're the ones that are zoning? I mean, who, the determination was that?
Well, I think, I think the way it came up is that, that the planning board was already in the process. They had initiated SECR. It was in that context that this question came up. And, and from what I understand, from the legal eagles, they're the ones who should continue with the SECR process, including this change.
Because it came up during the SECR process of the approval for this project, right?
Yes, yes. It's for this project.
That's when it was brought to our attention.
Mm-hmm. But, and it was, it was actually, the planning board asked us to do this.
Right. But, you know, as long as it passes muster with our town attorney that it's handled that way and not by way of the Town Board, since we're the, we're the ones that set the zoning, they just, you know.
That's right.
Enforce it.
And the town attorney has really set it up the way it's going. Yeah, I would, I had the same questions. And at one point, I...
It's also being funded by the escrow and the, by the developer at the planning board. So it will not cross the town.
Any other conversation?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. The third item on our agenda, it's a great pleasure to introduce to the public once again. He's been here before, but he's back again. He's been here before, but he's back again, bless his heart. Vin Caluccio, who is the chair of the Emergency Disaster Preparedness Committee. And Vin has responded to me and you because of a letter from Dutchess County Department of Emergency Response, who, through them, we are notified that federal regulation requires all local governments have a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan in order to be eligible to apply and receive federal mitigation grant funding for public and private mitigation projects. So, Vin, if you would like, you could stand in front of the mic or sit right where you are, if you're comfortable. I'm sure the microphone will pick you up. And welcome, and thank you for talking with us about this requirement and for agreeing to be the point person.
Well, it's my pleasure to be here once again. And rather than me try to talk off the top of my head, I'll just read a couple of quick paragraphs from a letter from the Department of Emergency Response, Dutchess County, to Supervisor Crane. Do you all have a copy of that letter?
Yes, we do. But it's good to read into the record, right.
Basically, it says that we're required to develop this all-hazard mitigation plan and needs to be updated on a five-year cycle. And that we've been awarded a grant to update the county plan as a full multi-jurisdictional HMP Hazard Management Plan, to include all municipalities. So, the county is trying to tie all of the municipalities together with a focus on mitigation. The mantra that we have is prepare for emergencies, respond to them when they happen, mitigate the problems, and then recover. So, this plan really focuses on the planning process of, from the beginning, trying to prevent disasters. But, of course, when they do occur, we should have a really solid plan to kick into effect. The requirements for this plan include quite a bit of data mining in terms of the types of preparedness that we have already in effect and the types that we need to develop. Fortunately, the disaster preparedness plan that we have already has a lot of that information. And I think it'll help to streamline the process of meeting these plan requirements. The role that Supervisor Crane has given to me is to be the point of contact between the county deliberations and the town hall here, so that I would be sort of a conduit of information going back and forth. And I would be attending the meetings at a card on a certain basis that I'm not sure of yet, at the Emergency Preparedness Center in Poughkeepsie. One of my favorite lines in this document says that, it basically acknowledges that the point of contact is not responsible for the full plan, but rather for organizing and strategizing with the disaster preparedness committee. I think it really represents a step forward in communicating what is happening at the local level among communities, bringing it up to the state level, and then bringing it up to the federal level. I have already spoken to some of my committee members about it. We're looking forward to participating in it. And we think, again, that we have a good foot forward with the plan that we have. But it is going to require quite a bit of data mining. Just as an example, we need to provide data and information about your community as requested by the steering committee of the contract consultant. There'll be a consultant that we work directly with. For instance, the structure and facility inventory data, identification of new development and anticipated development, identification of natural hazard risk areas. And the bullet goes on for about 13 additional bullets. So, we have a good bunch of it, but we need to collect more, and we'll be very busy doing that. Any questions or comments?
I thought it would just hold up the emergency action plan as it exists. And I know you have been to Dutchess County, and they have actually featured this plan that Red Hook has developed a number of years ago, and said that this is the kind of plan we expect of communities. And it's great to know that they're encouraging communities to get this work done.
Yes, it was a very good moment for us when we brought together some of the other responders from local towns. This was an initiative that our committee developed. And we decided, let's go and meet the folks at the Dutchess County Emergency Preparedness Center. We heard that it's a great center, and the people there are terrific. So, they greeted us with open arms, and we had a full day of activity, looking at their facilities, talking about different things. And when they held up our plan and they said this is an ideal plan, we were all very proud of them.
Well, we're very thankful to you. And we do have, as you said, we do have some of the information. We have some history with Hurricane Irene that taught us some lessons and brought some things to our attention that we know need to be addressed and need to be kept in mind. There is a floodplain map now that has been updated since that time. So, we do have a lot of information available, but we're very, very grateful because we do not have staff enough to sign somebody. It's going to be a task. And thank you for agreeing to take it on and to be the coordinator. I know that you'll be working with Teresa Burke of the Highway Department, which is often the department here at town level that, along with the police, gets called out during these kinds of events. And we don't know what the next one will be. It could be, it could be anything. It could be weather-related, and it seems like we've been on the verge of it a couple of times in the last few weeks. But it also could be something unexpected, like an accident, that would call out a lot of emergency requirements. So, it's great to have a committee of people dedicated to it to kind of educate us in, what do we do if some of these things come our way? So, thank you, Vin. And what I'll do now, did you want to say anything else, Vin?
No.
Okay. What I'll do now, then, is ask the board for their approval with this paperwork that you have. On the last page, I have talked with Dutchess County Emergency Response persons, and William Beal in particular, and asked him, did the person who is the primary point of contact necessarily need to be an elected official? And he said absolutely not. It can be a committee chair or a volunteer who has offered to serve in this role. So, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Vin Caluccio for the primary point of contact for our jurisdiction.
My second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I will return this now that we've had agreement on it, and make sure you got a copy. And I guess you will lead the way.
We're off and running.
Thank you, Vin. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you for taking that on. That looks like quite a challenge.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Let me just get my agenda. Okay, next on the agenda, Jim, you were unable to discuss with Bill O'Neill at the last meeting because you were otherwise engaged. So, we thought we would bring back the topic of the Red Hook Fire Company discussion to let you comment, too, since you met with them. And so, that's why this is on the agenda, just to bring it again to the public's attention.
Yeah, Bill and I met with them. In fact, I was reading, Jim Mulvey sent us a report after our meeting, too. I have a copy of his report here, but my actual file, I did not bring with me this evening still. But Bill and I met with them for a couple hours. They discussed their recruitment problems, their concerns with LoSAP, and we suggested we could get a meeting with their LoSAP planner from the state, with some of us on the board. The biggest problem, I guess, is recruitment. And they wanted, basically, they wanted our support and to make us and the public aware of the problems with the recruitment in the department, you know. And we, you know, talked about any help that we can or what they would like us to participate in, help them. You know, like the proposed parking lot, that's actually for the general public, but will make their room more functional, because parking is a problem. And hopefully, then, you know, that, along with recruitment and some active members, they can provide more functions there, which is a money-making thing for the department as well. And then they talked about their, having somebody look at construction items, because I guess it's been about, what, 25 years or more since it was built? And they had concerns with a number of renovations in the bathrooms. They were going to have their windows looked at.
They wanted to expand the recreation room also, didn't they? So, the location for...
In their long-term plan, it was to possibly provide room if, down the road, we should happen to have some, you know, some paid firemen as well as volunteers. They wanted to plan for that. Yeah, and the rec room, you know, we give them so much money for recruitment as part of our contract with them. You know, and they said it's, you know, it's not as, years ago, the guys would get together there and they, you know, in the evenings, and they don't do that as much anymore. And they said, the stuff in their rec room is just kind of old and beat up, you know. Maybe if they have something that is more appealing to younger guys, you could get more younger guys involved. And, of course, we said we'd help with anything I got, and I wouldn't have any problem with them spending some of their recruitment money on, who knows, games or whatever it might be, to help pick up the recruitment of the younger men today, the men and women.
Do they have a recruitment program in place with an agenda and materials and a specific plan for recruitment? Such as having maybe quarterly, advertise quarterly and have meetings with potential candidates on open houses and that sort of thing?
I know they advertise on a regular basis. Open houses, I'm not sure. The big problem is that, you know, they get quite a few new young members. The problem is today is
Keeping them.
They want to do something to entice them to stay there, to make it somewhat fun, because the requirements that the state has on volunteer firemen today are pretty heavy. They've got to spend a lot of hours of training. And then, and once they're trained and certified, you know, when they're exterior and interior fires, then they've got to spend so much time in training every year just to maintain that. And so, the idea was to make it, you know, more fun, so the guys could gather at evening and, you know, combine, have a training. And, you know, it used to be more like a club, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I remember the days when they used to have competitions all over the state, have these racing fire engines and climb the ladders and...
I think we hosted at one point, and I don't remember the year, and we may have done it more than once, a regional fire convention, fire company convention. Do you remember that? Where fire companies came from long distances, and there was always a parade associated with it. Often, the host fire company would sponsor fireworks. It was often around the Fourth of July. And it was a very, you know, it was a community event that people really looked forward to. They were very excited by it, and it was always good for the community. Brought a lot of people into town, you know, for that weekend. And I remember the parades were amazing. There were so many people.
Carnival every summer.
And the carnival, they used to...
I used to love going to that carnival.
I know, right.
Play the games of chance.
Do they mention anything like that? Do they mention anything about possibly a social thing like the carnival or a Fourth of July celebration that they might sponsor?
The trouble is, they just, it's difficult to give that bit of manpower.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know...
Game first is difficult.
It's true for every organization I know, that, you know, everybody's trying to recruit volunteers to help, and people have lots of choices and...
And I think it's particularly tough for the firemen because of the fact of all the training requirements.
Yes, right, right.
And so, you know, we said we would continue to meet with them so that hopefully we can help them, and they can help us and make it as fun and profitable as far as recruitment goes as possible.
Good. Did you get the impression that they would like to be on the agenda, like quarterly, to talk to the public about what was going on there?
That was mentioned, and Jim Mulvey said that that would be something that they would look at.
Okay.
It couldn't hurt.
There is some, as Jim said, I think there's a LoSAP meeting that they want to arrange. They're going to let us know when we can meet for that purpose.
Uh-huh, good.
To review the contract and the practical implementation of it. He also indicated that he would want to, I think, speak with the supervisor about attending meetings or having some type of a presentation on Panda.
That would be great. We would welcome that.
The Panda thing, you know, with the tour of the firehouse and the tour of the fire engines, and I'm sure you could do something, kind of a fun thing, and it's informative and also encourage recruitment.
But what I think we did commit, Jim and I, was that there was a discussion that they felt that they should have some type of recognition publicly for the special service by their membership, and that that would be something that would be of value to them. So, I think we invited them to, at any time, present to the supervisor, you know, a proposal to have a presentation in one of our official meetings when Panda is here, when the supervisor would prepare some type of a certificate in recognition for an individual achievement by one or more firemen, women.
That would be great.
And I think that's up to them to come back to us.
We would love to do that, yeah.
There is one thing that I thought, I think we also discussed, whether the board or the supervisor would be able, as a practical thing right now, to help the fire company enact some type of a rule within the employee manual of the town of Red Hook employees, where if you are a volunteer fireman and there is a fire and you're called to the fire, that we, that the town government would encourage that employee to take the time to go to the fire, would not be debited for a time lost and that sort of thing. So, I don't know. I mean, I think it would require some discussion with the highway supervisor, perhaps. But, and I think, Jim, like one or two current town employees are members of the fire company.
Yes, and I think that's up, we should just sit down with the highway supervisor so the men wouldn't be afraid to respond to calls. It's a win-win, because, you know, all of our guys are capable, they're trained in driving the trucks as well. And that's often the problem, to get the manpower, so that, you know, of guys that are close enough to respond.
Yeah, when they're in the fire, in the highway garage, they could walk over to the firehouse, really.
Right. You know, we want to assure them, whether it's an hour-long call or all day, that they won't lose any income from their job working for the town. And I think that's really a no-brainer for us.
I mean, that's the history of these fire, volunteer fire departments, is that employers let them go.
Yeah.
Jim, are you aware of whether or not there was a policy, actually, to that effect that has just become, you know, languishing somewhere? Was there a policy that the town had?
I don't know. The firemen told us that it was always a standard.
Right.
But somehow, it seems to have changed.
Okay.
You know, that's what they told Bill and myself.
Right.
You mean, with our town employees today, it's going to change?
They said that they, you know, I don't know why that the town employees, you know, feel they might lose. You know, so, it's just something internally, we have to make sure that that's not the case.
Are they supported by the private employers in the same context?
I was wondering the same thing. A campaign, maybe. Maybe we could help spearhead a campaign among local businesses in the chamber for people who are employed locally, because really, that's what's required, is somebody who's on hand, you know, not someone who...
That's part of the problem, yeah.
Yeah, Bard and schools and small businesses in the area. There are many, many men and women who... women who may not even think of it as, you know, public service available to them.
And that we could make a general appeal on Panda tonight for any employees that, you know, encourage their employees to be members of the volunteer fire company, that they won't sacrifice, you know, income should they have to be called out for a call.
Or maybe sponsor an open house where we invite some of those employers to come.
Well, that's a wonderful segue, Brenda, because we have been talking about doing a volunteer recognition night here. And because the weather has been so horrific, I knew, I knew I wouldn't be able to get it together in January because of other factors. But I was hoping to be able to do it in February, but I'm not even counting on February now for a dependable night that we can count on weather cooperating with us. So I was thinking that maybe we could look to early April. Is anyone planning, any one of you planning vacation time in the first week in April?
No.
No.
I usually go away in April. I'm not sure when. I haven't planned yet because my schedule's been crazy with the weather.
Well, the weather has made it crazy. And I say that without even looking at the calendar to see what we would be in conflict with. But usually, the first week is often available to us. You know, the second week gets a little hairy.
You mean that it's an evening here at the town hall soon?
An evening here at the town hall. We had it a year and a half or two ago, and we had a potluck supper. And we put out tables and we invited everybody who's served on committees. And we had a wonderful group of people and fabulous food. Everybody brought their favorite dish and-
Well, you know, the first day of spring is March 20th, though.
Yeah, the first day of spring. Hey, that's a thought. Do you think we could count on it, though, with this weather? I don't know.
The day of March is the fifteenth, though.
Or ten.
Wasn't there a travesty about several years ago on the April 4th here with everything closed for a week?
Yes, we have had that.
1997, April 4th, yep.
We could even go one step further and suggest April Fool's Day. Jim, will you be here then? You don't know? You're not sure?
I'm sure I'd be here April Fool's Day.
I would like to have it before Easter, and Easter would be the following Sunday. So the Wednesday, the first would be the-
Not this Wednesday, or they're not here?
No, no. No, Harry, it's not, it's not even close.
Okay.
So April 1st.
The supervisor.
You know when Easter is?
And I do. It's April 5th.
You know how that's determined, of course, too, don't you?
It's, yes, I do. As a matter of fact, would you like to tell the world? Go right ahead.
Easter is always the first Sunday after the first full moon, after the first day of spring. Do you know that?
The world according to Jim.
He learned that in the second grade.
One of those little things you don't forget. So the full moon's somewhere between the 20th of March and April 5th.
If, if I may then, if I may have your permission to plan with the help of the staff here, organizing a potluck supper for volunteers and anyone who's interested in town hall activities. It's kind of an open house. And we'll make sure the fire company's invited and the police department's invited. And really, it's just a matter of, you know, nosing around. It's not formal. You don't sit down to fancy meal. It's just, you know, finger food and food that's easy to eat and just being able to recognize people.
Does it mean at town hall, no beer?
No, no beer, Sergeant. So let's, let's name April 1st as the day. And by the next meeting, I will know that we have firmed it up, okay? And I look forward to having the fire company come back to us with whatever it is they think we can do to help because I-
That would be a really good time. We'd get a lot of volunteer firemen to talk to and chat.
It would be great.
Open, leashed, meeting, I think.
It would be great. Okay, let's plan that then. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is reorganization. And specifically, we had tabled, Jim, because of your absence as a member, or rather, not a member, a liaison to the zoning board of appeals, we tabled discussion and voting on that until you were back. And I guess I'll just ask, Nick, thank you for coming. You are the chair of that committee. Would you like to speak to the committee and some of the possibilities that we have here?
No, any possibility at all. Ken Anderson had spoke to me just a couple of years ago, and he said that he's willing to step down, that, you know, he felt he's served enough time on that board and that if we find a replacement for him, he'd step down. And we have not been terribly successful in our recruitment. But recently, we've been able to get Christopher Munn. Apparently, he has planning board experience, and he had to step down from the planning board because of his involvement with the paper. And apparently, the paper no longer exists. So he has a little more free time on his hands. He expressed an interest in working with the ZBA. But that, I think, another was to return the, either one of building inspectors or zoning enforcement officers, or have them present during the meetings. Oftentimes, we have, the board will have questions that only those two could answer, especially of late. We get a request for variance, and to us, it's just in black and white. We have no way of determining what's really behind the scenes, what's in the background with that. And Steve Cole in particular can help. Well, he, I guess Bob Fennell, he also writes some of those. But they can give us some insight as to what has transpired prior to the applicant coming before the board, and that would have quite a bit. But that, I guess there was some question as to budgetary matters. And I, in different conversations with the inspectors, you know, I've been informed that our fees actually lag behind other towns and villages. We might want to examine increasing some of our fees, you know, simply to cover costs.
Do we have a fee schedule or any of the material?
That is on the agenda, and it will be in-
It's in our packet here this evening.
In your packet, you-
Doesn't say what the Red Hook ZBA schedule is.
Do we have no fee schedule for the ZBA?
So you don't right now have a fee schedule, right?
I have.
Yeah, we have an application fee. I think it's $150 or something like that.
I will give it to you. I have Red Hook. I thought that this was made for your files. You have not got the building permit fee schedule?
I have this.
We don't see anything leading to the zoning board in there, though.
There's nothing that shows the ZBA schedule. I mean, we have Pleasant Valley, we're-
That's true.
$2,500 worth of commercials.
Well, we'll skip ahead, let's not skip ahead past the subject at hand. But we'll talk about that tonight, Nick. We are going to talk about fees. That's the next thing on the agenda. So we have the, we have just received today a letter this afternoon from Ken Anderson, who came in to see me and says, "Dear Sue, it has been my privilege and opportunity to serve as a chosen member of the Town of Red Hook zoning board of appeals for 23 years. I hope I have contributed in matters that have been beneficial to the town and community. At this time, I have decided to step aside and retire from the zoning board of appeals. Please accept my resignation at this time. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board. Sincerely, Kenneth A. Anderson." And I, before accepting or moving to accept his resignation, I would just like to say that anyone who has served 23 years as he has faithfully and with great, with great intelligence and dedication deserves a round of applause from everyone in the community. He's been a wonderful volunteer for the Town of Red Hook, and I move to accept his resignation.
His second.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, I like, I like his use of the word chosen member. He said, "I have been for 23 years a chosen member of the ZBA." And I think what he means by that is that he has been, you know, loyal, and he's been doing his best job and for the best interest of the community.
And he was chosen by the community.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, Ken has served very well for, for a long time.
Well, what I, what I would like to do is, on April 1st, if it is April 1st, I would like to give special recognition to people like Ken. There, there won't be many of them that compete with 23 years. And so, we can maybe make him a guest of honor that night. And thank you to him and his family for all those years of service. I so move. I think we had a second? Did we have all in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, so Bill, you're the, you're a liaison to this. Would you like to go down the list then? We have two actually in hand letters of interest. One is Christopher Munn, and one came more recently.
From Christopher Close.
Yes. Would you like to just talk about that a little bit?
Well, I mean, my thought was that Chris Munn had, has been indicating an interest in serving on the ZBA. Their, the ZBA is very active and wants to get back to business. And so I believe that Mr. Munn is available to begin if he is appointed to the ZBA. Christopher Close has just recently indicated an interest in the ZBA. But as we all know, he's very active in the economic development committee.
He's the chair.
Chairman of it. And he's also become very active as a treasurer now of the Red Hook Community Center program. And so, my, my recommendation is that we appoint Chris Munn to replace Ken Anderson effective tonight so that he can begin work there. And that we hold Christopher Close's application as a potential for an alternate position on the ZBA, but not act on that until we have further discussions with him as far as, you know, which would, what would be his choice almost. I know that, I think there are people who serve on multiple committees, you know, in the town.
Yeah, we do have some.
Mary Ann Johnson, Susan Isrodi, I mean, come to mind quickly. But he is the chair of the EDC. So we have to discuss with the-
They meet twice a month, and tomorrow morning is a meeting.
Okay. So that would be, that would be my thought.
I'm writing down, as you say that, the, the term of that appointment would be seven years. So that means he will serve through 21. I know, I can hardly-
Nick Anis is up for reappointment also, so he would serve through 2021 also.
No.
The next should be through 21.
Through 20.
From 13?
To, and-
To 20, wouldn't it be?
To 20.
Because he wasn't, must not have been reappointed last year.
I don't think we acted on it last year.
We waited.
2020.
Here goes your theory about your appointment.
2020 would be-
The chair is 2013, Harry.
Well, they still take them, right?
2021.
And the chair is annually, right?
Yes, yes.
Nick, how often do you need an alternate? I'm just wondering. So if there, there was an alternate, how often would they be needed?
90% of the time. I mean, we have at least one board member that has an excessive absenteeism, right?
And how many times did you meet last year? Just for an idea.
I don't recall, but I don't think we met all the time.
I think it was a little, yeah, I think about one month it was not.
Yeah, it may have been.
So that's not, that's it.
Yeah.
You seem to have a feast or a famine.
Yeah, the only question I have to Bill, did you want to speak to Chris first to see before we would appoint him as an alternate, you said, or?
Chris.
Chris Close? Well, no. I mean, I wouldn't recommend an appointment of him tonight.
Okay.
But just to put his name there as a possible alternate, but to confirm with him and perhaps with others in the committees, you know, just what position he would want. He's obviously retired. He's very active. He's very competent. His wife is, is another asset in the community, you know, who volunteers through Red Hook, historic Red Hook. And so, you know, I think many people would probably encourage putting him to work. But it's just a question of perhaps where he best fits and discuss that more with him. We just got his letter, I think.
I just got my mail today.
Yeah, just today, yes.
Didn't even have it.
So what you're suggesting then is that Nick Anis be appointed for the year ahead for 2015 as chair.
Chair, yes.
And that his, his appointment that should have been done last year be instated that his term would be through 2020.
Yes.
And that the appointment that is new this year for the vacancy left by Ken Anderson's resignation would be made Christopher Munn through year 2021.
Yes.
Is that right? Is that a motion?
21 or 22, seven years.
21.
Seven years?
Yes, I so moved.
It's seven years. Is there a second?
Sue.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And so, we then have a seven-member board with still two vacancies. Should there be anyone in the community that is interested in serving, learning a lot about zoning in Red Hook, the alternate position is open. There are two of them, and we would welcome a letter of interest. It should go to the Red Hook Town Clerk.
And we should add that we still have two alternate positions for the planning board?
And that as well, right.
Sue, we have a letter for, for an interest in the CAC. Does everybody have that? Could we act on that tonight? Is there a reason we couldn't move on, move on that? I think his letter was misplaced for the last month.
Do you have it? I don't have it.
Is that Jody?
It is Jody, yeah.
Do you have a copy for everybody or not?
No, I thought, I keep sending it to everybody, but somehow, it originally went to Sue Crane, and then I sent it to Sue.
Brenda sent it to me.
It originally came to me?
It's a guy, Jodya.
Okay. Maybe it went to you, Joe?
And the chair is-
It must have been, it must have been when my computer fried. That's right about the week my computer fried. I'm sorry. I, this doesn't even look familiar to me. Okay, so he says, "My name is Jodya Jacobs, and I am writing to express interest in becoming a member of the CAC committee. I have a keen interest in environmental issues and hope to become more involved in the community. My wife and I moved with our twin boys, aged 12, to Red Hook from Kingston five years ago. We love it here. We love the scenery and the small-town ambiance, and our boys love the schools. I teach technology education in the Dutchess County Bosse's Salt Point Center Middle School. Thanks for your consideration, Jodya Jacobs." And Brenda, that would be a motion from you to appoint him to the vacancy. Is there one vacancy?
There's now one.
I see it, okay. And that's a two-year appointment?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
That, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and I apologize to you. That one got away from me, and I would definitely remember twin boys. And I say that, I would remember that.
And if I know Jody, then I think he'll be an asset to that committee.
Right. Look forward to meeting him.
Before we get off this, one of the other things Nick just mentioned is, in fact, I saw Bob Fennell today, and he said Steve had asked him to come to the meeting tomorrow night.
Yes.
And with victims. So, you know, so hopefully, one of those guys can try and attend as many as possible, and they can't.
Tomorrow's an issue if we do meet tomorrow.
Yes, well, there will be nights when you won't need them, but those nights that you do need them, I don't think you should hesitate to ask them.
Yeah, it's rare. But I'm trying to think, over the last few years, when we've not addressed them when they were there. It's usually, you know, some clarification about the inordinance or something that deals with the history of something that's, you know-
I had not known that they were expected to come to all of- I had not known that they were expected to come to all of these zoning board of appeals meetings. I don't recall that being a policy or a practice, so it's new to me.
They did, up until a year or so ago, they were-
They came to every meeting?
Bob Fennell was there at every meeting, yes.
Okay.
It was extremely helpful.
Well, I'm sure they can work it out between them and if they cannot, they cannot.
Is there a, how do you feel about an escrow and a lawyer? I'm just comparing it to the planning board. The planning board has-
We should. As a matter of fact, the issue with the 78 that's filed against us regarding the great issue.
I think we will-
I believe they've asked for escrow for that. I don't know that they proceeded yet, but they've amended it.
Well, we don't have, we don't have, do we have an escrow policy like we do with the planning board?
It doesn't appear, it's not on the fee schedule, but-
Right. There's a permit, a building permit fee. There are all sorts of fees for various permits, but I don't see one for escrow.
I had a glance at some of these, at some of the other towns and they seem to, they seem to have fees and escrows with the ZBA. For, I guess substantially the same reason we have it with planning.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we should, we should, have the attorney just look that, see if we have that in there. And if we don't, then we should put that policy in. We don't necessarily have to collect one, but then we have it, you know, in place should we need it, yeah.
Well, again, the escrow, if you don't spend it, it always goes back to the first one.
Well, yes, but still, it's the idea of them cutting a check and us have to cut another one when we need it.
There's times when you don't need it, of course, true.
Well, the town of Pleasant Valley has a $4,000 per residential unit escrow fee as an example.
That's a lot.
And in fact, I think all three of the towns compared did have an escrow policy for zoning board actions.
There are, there is a distinction between a fee that you charge, like a building fee, a fee for the application versus an escrow deposit, which is sort of a minimum deposit to say, this is a standard deposit for an escrow for this kind of application that we've decided is reasonable and customary for this type of application. And then, as Councilmember O'Neil says, you would refund what's not used of the escrow, but a fee would be different. A fee would be a fee.
And in these, well, in these three towns we compare, they had it separately listed.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just glancing at these and they all seem to have an escrow one way or another. The wording is certainly inconsistent.
And you have an escrow law. Your law is in place and ready to go, so it's just a matter of implementing it. And the planning board has been using it.
Well, I mean, all they could do is put a number on the fee schedule.
Well, yeah, I mean, they could, they could, right now, you know, establishing escrow for particular applications. So, but what you would be, I gather, discussing is establishing sort of a standard, you know, escrow for certain types of applications, certain typical types of applications, so that that was more routine.
Well, yeah, I mean, as for the ZBA, there seems to be a need to have an attorney weigh in on certain projects. And who pays for the attorney? I mean, if there's an escrow in place and that process is available to the chair, then they should be able to get that done.
Can't figure out the Rhinebeck one.
Whether that be that money can be used to be, versus the members of the building department can, that's another matter.
That's not, no, that would have to be a matter of a fee that you establish at the amount based on, you know-
The nature of the application.
Nature of the application, correct. Yeah, because they work for the town. That's not a separate, that's not a separate expense. Yeah. I would say that should be the nature of the fee as opposed to-
So escrow-
This is not easy to just pop in there.
Yeah. Yes, escrow deposit in the case of one of these towns.
Yeah, you flip the town of Pleasant Valley, they have an escrow fund scheduled, then they have it scheduled for area, variances, area, residential, commercial, and use variances. And then they have the little asterisk that says, "Where required by the zoning board of appeals pursuant to their local law number 2 of 2009." So that's obviously when they set, discovered the need sometimes and set this up, so it would be at the discretion of the zoning board if they want to require the escrow, which makes sense to me.
Yeah. And we do have, we do have an escrow law, right? In place?
Absolutely.
It's a matter of applying it.
What does that mean? That you may do it? Is that what you mean by an escrow law, that you may? It doesn't have the specifics.
Well, it doesn't establish a particular dollar amount. I don't think you would do that in a law. It establishes the procedure and the protocol for holding the escrow. It establishes how you would do it and that it is required as part of an application, but-
But who makes the decision whether escrow is required?
The board.
The ZBA? By a vote of majority?
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be a ZBA board establishing it, but you could, as a matter of procedure, establish a fee schedule or an initial deposit, you know, as a starting point.
Yeah, the fee schedule is one thing, but I mean, it's hard to establish an escrow.
Right, but this also establishes an escrow schedule for a minimum escrow for that type of-
In other words, we would consider requiring, like some of these towns, fees, a fee and an escrow on every application.
Yeah, I take it that's what a lot of the other towns are doing.
What I would need is a more clear understanding of when legal counsel is going to bill the board, you know, as opposed to doing, I don't know, what do you call it, pro bono work or whatever it is.
That's what we're talking about, isn't it?
You owe us, I mean, it's my understanding that, Chris, that you owe us a certain amount of legal counsel, but then beyond that, we would be billed for that. And that's where I need the understanding is, where there would be additional billing and we could make arrangements for escrow.
Yeah, typically what happens is the application's specific matters are billed and the things that are under, often under general retainer are things that are general procedural advice, you know, how to manage a meeting, how to, you know, how to deal with minutes, how to deal with general procedural matters that aren't necessarily specific to an application, but go to how the board functions. But the review of a particular application and the specifics of how does this application fit into the zoning law and, you know, what are the particular requirements of that would be the kind of thing that would be appropriately escrow, okay?
It would be-
That's generally the distinction that people make.
And being guided through this Article 78, would be, we should escrow funds for that, then?
Well, yeah, that's a little different, so we should talk about that differently. It's a litigation matter.
That's a lawsuit, so you better have a lawyer.
More lawyers.
I would like us to look at this escrow fund schedule on page three of six.
Which, which one?
That I'm about to tell you.
Okay.
Couldn't quite get it out.
Which one?
Pleasant Valley.
Can you say that a little faster?
So, so the language is here. It's, it's very instructive. Maybe we should take a look at this and see if this makes sense for us. I kind of like the idea of the escrow tied to the value of what we're being asked to consider. And that appears in our own planning board escrow account. Says, "In addition to the application fee, an escrow account must be established with an initial deposit in the amount of one-half of 1% of the estimated project costs." So that it's, if it's a modest project, it's not a huge burden, but if it's a substantial development, it should be a substantial investment escrow.
It should be geared toward what you expect the effort to be, right? Or the, a measure of what you're expecting the effort to be.
Well, Pleasant Valley says for the ZBA, it's an initial deposit of 1,000, depleted to 500, and then you add money back. And what isn't spent is returned.
That was for the ZBA interpretation, you mean, Mary?
Well, that's what I'm not sure what it is, sir.
No, that's for the, a residential area variance.
Yeah. Okay.
The use variance is $2,500, right?
Well, that's a greater test, so I can see why that'd be a higher amount from the beginning.
It's a great form thing, right?
On zoning, and then it was 5,000.
Great form.
You're one and a half percent of the value of the grade.
What kind of a variance is that?
I think that this, page five of six, calculation of escrow fund is clear.
Yes.
I mean, it's easy, it's easy to understand. It's easy to find where you are, you know, for the applicant, which is important. And for those of you who are trying to communicate it, you know, you hand them a sheet of paper with this escrow calculation on it and it's not open to debate. It is what it is. So do you want to consider it? Do you want to try to come up with, is this something-
Well, maybe Chris should just look at it, see if the verbiage looks like it's good for us and then we can decide on our fees if we're going to change it or what we might want to, then come up with our own.
So the model that you like is the Pleasant Valley?
I like the Pleasant Valley, yeah, I like the Pleasant Valley.
It looks like it makes sense.
It seems like a simple model.
No, you're right.
Yeah, right, well, I have another one of Rhinebeck that's clearer than this.
We have a problem that these things are really handled by the secretaries and they, it's very difficult for them to-
Well, I don't think anyone wants to read five pages in order to figure out what to say to someone, you know? You want to be able to hand them something that is pretty concrete and straightforward.
The concise schedule of Rhinebeck's is not here. They have a fear, a more fear to understand version.
I think we received this from Victoria.
This one?
I don't know, I thought Ann did some of the research, too.
Victoria sent, I'm sorry, she sent Hyde Park.
I haven't been able to figure out-
And Ann pulled up Pleasant Valley and, what was the other one? Rhinebeck, excuse me.
And this Hyde Park separates out the escrow deposit schedule by engineer slash planner is one column and then attorney is another.
They do, and they are very active, you know, they have quality development purposes going on at any given time. And they do maintain separate funds because they find that for the bigger projects, especially which they have a lot of, it's a better way for them to be able to keep track of whether escrows have been depleted. Because there's a lot of work going on in parallel at any given time.
Hyde Park, you speaking of?
Yeah. So, you know, whether that's a good model, I don't know, but that's what they do, is they have a separate one for each of their purposes. And they have a bookkeeper who can extract the each ones of those little funds, as opposed to one big fund.
And they also have a minimum reserve, so both they and Pleasant Valley have addressed that.
And they have this sentence in Hyde Park, "The ZBA shall also have the authority to require an initial deposit for the attorney to the ZBA." But you say, Chris, that the ZBA does have a, an escrow law?
Yeah, the escrow law currently, our code provision covers all of the boards, the town board, planning board, and the zoning board.
It's a conceptual law, based on the concept.
Right, so it deals with the procedures for the escrow being established.
We don't have a copy of that, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't have amounts.
Right, it doesn't have amounts and it doesn't have a minimum.
Does it suggest how the amounts would be created?
No, I don't think so. Other than that it should be reasonable and reasonably related to-
Not a percent, one-half of 1%.
Not a percentage, because how is a percentage, you know, related to the project size? I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think that one of them uses like the number of units in a subdivision or something, which is more related to the size of the project. And perhaps the complexity.
Well, Pleasant Valley uses that.
Right.
The serves of the units and whatever, which wouldn't work for the ZBA.
Right, but it's an, it is an initial, you know, I mean, if a project is bigger and more complex, reasonably you end up with a replenishment if you're going on. It's just a place to start, you know, if it's a bigger project.
Usually, Chris, who handles rezonings and the escrow account for that and all?
Well, that would be a town board determination, so the town board would need to make that decision.
Even when the town board's not the lead agency?
Well, that's only lead agency for the seeker purpose, right? So whoever's lead agency for seeker would make that determination, but you're the determining agency for purposes of evaluating the zoning amendment. So you would be the ones that would need to establish, if you're going to establish an escrow or a fee for that, that would be the town board's prerogative.
So currently, we don't have a procedure for a fee, a fee for a rezoning?
Well, there is a, there is a procedure for a petition at the expense of the applicant, but there isn't a particular fee schedule established for that.
Okay, but just that there can be a fee?
That'd be very hard to predetermine.
Well, that is going to depend on, I think you'd have to make a decision on a case-by-case basis, depending on the complexity of the undertaking.
Yeah, that's my, that's my point.
That one would be a little harder to establish up front.
And then this fee schedule seems to-
In terms of escrow.
This fee schedule seems to make sense the more I look at it.
This one, Hyde Park?
This one, Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley is, is the most like us in population and character of community and wrote miles and all the rest. So it's a good, you know, if we, if we think we'd like to compare ourselves with someone, that would be a good town to turn to if, if it's one that you think you'd like to consider.
Yeah, I mean, Chris wouldn't just jump into it, but it-
Well, it looks like we need to do it, so whether, whether you jump tonight or another night, what would you like to do? Table it?
I think.
Is that what you're saying? You want to table it?
I think we need to table it and have, have some discussions with a couple of people somehow. Sure, who, where, whether, how.
Okay.
And, I mean, that's just my thought. I'd be hard pressed to say, it's kind of feel like shooting from the hip if you don't have an opportunity to really.
Are there any other cases where you're thinking about establishing an escrow beside the great application?
I recall one in the past where we probably should have, where there was an interpretation and-
Where you want, how often do you, primarily you're going to be using it for advice from a lawyer?
Yes.
So anytime, I would say that when you have a commercial application as opposed to, you know, a very simple residential single lot variance, where you're not doing more multiple subdivisions, where you're not doing anything overly complicated, you know, perhaps that's something that you just need general procedural assistance with, but for something that is, you know, a more complex application, that's something where typically most of the community, frankly, most of the communities have someone there all the time anyway, but if you're going to have someone there for particular applications, then you would at least want to consider that for those.
Yeah, the cases where we needed, really needed additional legal counsel have all been commercial.
When you have an issue with the lot line, shed from a lot line or something like that, that's complicated.
That's pretty cut and dried. That's simply procedural.
Yeah.
Well, surely, I mean, as a result of this discussion tonight, I mean, if you, as soon as you see any application that looks like it's going to cost some money to hire an expert, you know, either the lawyer or an engineer, something like that, what, you would ask the ZBA to agree to set an escrow. Come up with a figure and just tell the applicant that. That's what you do with Chris?
Well, you probably want-
You do have that tool then.
Yes. Except that right now, he doesn't, they don't know. He doesn't know, the board doesn't know, until the applicant arrives at their doorstep, ready to be heard, and the person who sets that up is the secretary. And in the case of the planning board, the secretary has a fee schedule to, to-
Require the fee, but not the escrow.
No, the fee and the escrow, don't, yes, they get escrow in advance. Yeah, they do.
They being the ZBA?
No, the planning board.
Okay, I'll talk about the ZBA. Okay, I'll talk about the ZBA.
Yeah, but the planning board, the planning board has an escrow fee schedule in advance, at least it's a starting point.
Right, we don't have that with the ZBA.
Right, and the problem is, I think, with the ZBA, there is no starting point, and these people, they suddenly arrive at the doorstep, you know, in a meeting, and they needed a, they needed a, an escrow. It is not a clean approach to it.
Right, but something simple comes before the ZBA.
Right.
And they're there, we have this escrow in place at this time, along with the calculation of the escrow fund at the ZBA's discretion, so they come before the ZBA, and, you know, and it seems more complicated than the initial application, or they didn't know.
Yeah.
So, the chairman of the ZBA says, you know, "We have a calculation escrow, and if you would like to proceed with your request of this variance, we're going to need $1,000 over in the escrow, because we're going to have to have our attorney or our engineer or what have you review this."
So you would see them coming to the meeting first and then be told...
Because they very often come at the initial meeting and pay what they have to for the postage, because they're responsible for that in addition to the application fee.
Okay.
Because the secretary has figured out who they have to mail it to, and they write a check generally and give it to the secretary at the night of the meeting. And so if they, you know, if they say, "Well, you know, I can't do that," well, then the ZBA is not going to, we have in place, not going to proceed with their request for the variance, right?
Yeah.
Well, certainly, certainly if there are consultant fees associated with an individual's application, the people of the town should not be paying for it. It should be the individual who's asking for the variance, or for whatever it is.
Well, that's what we're saying.
So, yeah, I understand that, I'm just reiterating it and saying in even stronger terms that we certainly shouldn't assign consultants to solve one individual or individuals' problems at no expense to them.
No.
Right. Well, I would recommend that we look at this page five of six, and if, Chris, you could share with us the verbiage in the law? I don't know what that is, and maybe the next meeting we can firm this up?
So our law is maybe okay, except it doesn't have a fee schedule.
And it wouldn't bend the law, that would just be a resolution that you would adopt, just like your fee schedule every year, you're updating the fee schedule every year.
Do we need to update this year this fee schedule that we have?
You should.
That's the second question.
I think we should either adopt...
Does that mean you increase it?
Yeah, we should adopt.
Our current fee schedule.
It's like you review everything.
You have it, right?
I don't think I have.
Have we heard?
Maybe I haven't.
Harry, I don't know if you have it.
It's always interesting now, because the applicant before the zoning board pays the application fee. In addition to that, they have to pay the postage. And we left it that way, because that can, you know, they have to be return receipts, so expensive postage, but that could be quite a variation that depending on how many properties are within so many hundred feet of them.
And so do I.
I didn't look at it, I didn't rest in any of it.
It's not addressed to me, since they have higher fees, that probably just absorbs that postage cost. Right now, our applicants pay the fee plus the postage, which is a variable, as you know.
Sometimes, at a time or two, when the postage fee has actually exceeded the application fee, the application fee is, I believe, is only $150.
No matter what they're requesting, it's not a fee.
Correct, yep.
Right, plus postage.
Plus postage.
Which probably isn't too far out of line with some of these others that we've been reviewing from the town, in actuality.
What, the application fee?
Yes, our application fee doesn't include their postage or mailings.
That's interesting.
So after the first, they come before the first meeting, you know, to explain to them what the public hearing is and so on, which is the following meeting, but at that time, they have to give the secretary the money for the postage, because she has to mail out the return receipt to all the neighbors. And we've kept it separate from the fee, because that's quite a variable, depending on how many neighbors are within a few hundred feet, you know? If it's a close neighborhood, there couldn't be a lot of them. And if it's larger parcels, there's fewer.
Yeah, just like Pleasant Valley has $250, because their base, their variance fee, $250.
So that's, and ours is $150.
Ours is always $1.
Well, Pleasant Valley is $250, Red Hood is $150, plus the postage. Doesn't it equal out?
I think this is going to take a little sorting.
Yes, I do, too, and I don't want to make a mistake.
So if we could agree on this, that Pleasant Valley appears to be one that appeals to all of us, and that we need to study our own fee schedules and compare it to the town most like us in this group of towns, which is Pleasant Valley, and then bring it back to the board the next time we meet.
Maybe get the clearer version of the Rhinebeck fee schedule.
Yeah, we don't have a copy of our own right here with us tonight, do we?
Yes, you do.
But it doesn't include the, it doesn't have the ZBA in it.
It doesn't do us a lot of good, it just is, it's full of holes.
These are just the building inspectors.
Yes, that's all that we have, Jim, that relates to zoning, right. All right, so that should be part of the update, I think. Don't you agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a task, and who wants to wrestle with it? Shall we all, if we all individually wrestle with it, we'll never get it done.
No, yeah.
Well, we each have a copy of what the rest of our planning board and zoning board fees are.
You each have a copy of that in your file, in your folder.
There's no other paper that lists zoning board fees.
As far as I know, this is what's available.
Maybe we work with, work with the building inspector and one or two of us work with the building inspector.
You have this, planning fees, and you have this, building and zoning fees, that's what we have.
I didn't see that.
Well, it's in your folder.
I know we have an application fee before the zoning board.
I can't find it.
Here.
So we don't have everything before us right now.
Well, I guess I'll volunteer to...
Oh, I knew if we waited long enough, someone's hand would...
I have access to two or three people every week, so we should be able to work this out.
Okay, great, and you'll come back to us at the next meeting with a recommendation?
If I can get it together, yeah.
If you can, if you can. If three of you, if three of you can fresh it out.
Yeah.
Great. Perfect, thank you, Bill. Okay.
It will not be a final decision, it will be a recommendation.
I think he did a group call in here.
Yeah, well, you have quite enough on your plate, you could excuse yourself from that little activity if you wish. Nick and Harry and Bill would be enough probably to get it done.
I agree.
Okay, so, we'll put, we'll bring that back.
Anything else we have to do?
No, we're almost finished on the agenda.
I set my Netflix on pause.
Netflix, Netflix on pause.
It wasn't a blue movie, was it?
Well, you can't have that.
A blue movie, was it?
Be careful, they can hear you when you talk while your TV's on.
I said ice on that steep driveway.
You should go out.
Ice.
Other doors.
Yeah, don't go in.
Either the back way.
Ice back here, too.
Yeah, I know.
Well, that's true.
Don't go out the front door.
Don't go out the front.
Don't go out the front.
Don't go out the side. Well, that door is open, you could go in that side.
You gonna go that way?
So we want a fee schedule for escrow.
Town Hall Insulation Project, Harry.
Oh.
Can you comment on that?
Yes.
And the need for it, and why we're doing this?
John, and myself, and John from the Rec Commission, and your...
Labor from the Rec Park?
Labor from the Rec Park, we'll work...
Two labors from the Rec Park.
Two labors. We're going to, we're going to go up in the overhead, look at all the insulation, and we're necessary, and because we have taken, looked around in a couple of spots, and the insulation has been thrown back, removed, or piled up in a pile, and left whole sections uninsulated, and essentially, we're going to put the insulation back where it was, buy whatever we need in a way of additional insulation, and install it properly as it should be installed in this entire building.
Who's going to crawl around up there, Harry?
Well, nobody's going to crawl around.
The two labors from the Rec Park that are temporary labors who are available and willing.
We're going to have to do it from the floor here, isn't it?
And they're going to have to go up from here up.
Right.
It's going to be really cold right now, I mean, I'm thinking maybe in a week or so, when it hopefully warms up, it would be a smart...
Well, if they had a little bit of sun, though, it would be a good time to be in the attic, and some of you don't want it.
Yeah, well, mostly, mostly, we're going to have to do it from a ladder right here.
This is the whole building?
The whole building, well, you can see, this is a drop ceiling. It's below the beams, so you can, you can put your head up in here and see around where you want to go, and you can tell where it's missing, and then you can put it back, and just stick it, hold it in place with those wires. It looks like there's two layers of insulation up there, and the lower layer is backed, the second layer is not backed.
The lower layer, was it stapled on the lower layer, or just put it in with the...
It was, it was, it could have been stapled on, it didn't look enough yet, because we looked in the hallway, it's torn out. It's up there, but it was pushed back, you know, right, there's nothing there, it's just a hole in the insulation, and it's, we don't know how many holes, they're all like that, so getting the insulation, we'll go down there with whatever we have to, to get insulation from Williams as we need it, and we won't buy any more than we'll need.
But we know that, we know that, yeah, these two people, you know, have good hands, and we've got a plan, and we know that we are losing air conditioning, to the extent that there's so much humidity up there that it looks like the roof, it looks like the ceiling is leaking, and it's not. It's moisture on the cold pipes above here in the summer that it's just pouring out, you know, and you can see what looks like leaks, they're not leaks, they're condensation, so it's not only the winter, it's the summer.
See, in this part of the building, you saw what they did, they went up there, put in new insulation, and put furniture strips across the whole thing, but there are wires made for that, that you just push up and it holds it in place.
Yeah, they were pretty nice.
Yeah, and they're, and buy a bundle for five bucks, and they're very efficient.
Harry, I am glad that you, and thank you for, you and John, for taking on this analysis, because were we to go with a commercial solution, it was a cost that was so prohibitive, we over the years before we could consider doing it.
We'd never see the payoff.
We can't do it, we cannot afford it, we cannot do it.
There's really no point.
This is a solution that we can work at, it may not all get done in the next two or three months, but I'm hoping that a good portion of it will, and I'll look forward to another report when it gets started.
Yeah, I would hope it would only take a couple of weeks at the most, and maybe even less than that. It's just the nuisance moving around.
It's just a dirty job, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if they'll even be that dirty, when I looked up there, it wasn't, you're down below, and I wouldn't want to crawl around up there.
It's itchy.
Yeah, that's right, know all about that part.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you for spearheading that, Harry, I appreciate it. The last thing, actually, I think that we need to discuss tonight, we're doing pretty well time-wise, is the Transportation Alternatives Program, which Brenda will explicate.
So I wrote up a little report tonight, we, everybody, of course, knows we've received the funding for the sidewalk project, so this is just to explain exactly where we are to date. Since the TAP project, and that stands for Transportation Alternative Program, is part of the Federal Highway Authority's Federal Aid Highway Program, and is subject to FHWA regulations and processes, we have completed the planned and identified project and obtained project funding processes, so our next step is to execute the project agreement. This will be an agreement between the New York State DOT, or Department of Transportation, and the town, and the town is the project sponsor. Before the agreement can be executed, the project must have been listed both on the local transportation implementation plan, and that's called TIP, and that is a five-year capital program that assigns federal funds to transportation projects that are located in our county, and it must also be listed on the STIP, which is the state version of that plan. The Poughkeepsie Duchess County Transportation Council added the project to the TIP in December, and they're awaiting final approval from the State DOT and the Federal Highway Authority, after which it will be added to the state plan. All of the above are prerequisites to the preliminary design phase. Another requirement is to refine the project scope. Originally, the scope included not only the east side of Route 9 from Town Hall to Hardscrabble, but also the area on the west side in the village that was never completed along the laundromat. The village was listed as a partner in our application. However, after the grant funding was awarded in October, the village learned that they received funding for the village portion of the sidewalk from the Community Development Block Grant. The block grant requires no match from the community, and the village has decided to use these monies from the block grant to complete the west side sidewalk. Therefore, we will have to revise our scope to reflect this change. Once the preliminary design phase is entered, a consultant will be procured, a design report prepared, environmental screenings prepared, with design approval being the final goal. We will keep you updated as we proceed to this next phase, which we originally projected to have a start date of mid-May. I am still hopeful we can make that, but we'll see. Local State DOT representatives will meet with the town on Friday, February 13th, to begin the implementation of our project. CAC Representatives Laurie Houston, who is a part of our grant team, and Sarah Imboden, the Highway Superintendent Teresa Burke, and Sue and I will represent the town. Excellent, that's where we go.
Thank you.
She's laughing, you got the TIP, right?
Oh, I know.
STIP. And TAP.
It is a puzzle, it is a puzzle.
Are you musical, could you put a few notes to that?
It is a puzzle, it always is. Okay, I have, need to talk with the town board about contracts in attorney-client, but first, is there any correspondence? I think there is odds and ends, nothing that is business-related tonight.
I want to mention, I have two documents, three pages, that I want to give everybody, unless you have a ready one. But this has to do with communications with the assessor and the supervisor, myself, at a meeting that we had, and his response to specific questions, so I think you wanted to be able to have this done, so that everybody at our next board meeting will be able to discuss it.
Yes.
So I'll make copies before everybody leaves tonight.
That's great, good, thank you.
Give everybody a copy.
Thank you, that'd be great. Okay, any other correspondence, anyone can think of? I think, seems to me, we had a lot of meetings last week, and most of them were preliminary, so as they unfold, we will certainly bring you news of those meetings. We had a special meeting here, the town board was asked to have a special meeting regarding a project that's being undertaken by some local citizens for the sake of building an indoor pool, so we wanted to make the public aware of that, and had the meeting public. Public did not come to that meeting, but I'm sure in the near future, we'll be hearing more about that project, and those people, as they are ready, will be asked to be on the agenda, so we will all learn more about that. And that, I think, is all I have. So I'd like to make a motion to go into attorney-client for the purpose of discussing contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The losses?
And we thank you, Panda, for being with us tonight.
Get some of the cold.
And you can go home and be warm.
Yeah, I don't go for the secrecy business.